Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. All right, ayes have it on the financial report. At this time, we're preparing for audience participation. Mrs. Stewart is going to call your name, you will come, you will state your name, and your physical address, and you have three minutes from start to finish to, uh, to address the city with your issue.
Ms. Deborah Ellis.
I'm trying to discuss the matter of my neighbor, Demond Sledge. Me lives at Fort Seventy Oklahoma Street. And I've had been complaining about the noise that he keeps out there, twenty-four seven.
Four seventy Oklahoma is your address?
Yes, his address.
Okay, state your name.
Forty-eighty Oklahoma Street.
Yes, ma'am.
So I had been complaining about the noise that he keeps out there twenty-four seven, keeping up day and night. And he also be having dogs fighting over there. And, uh, two, I mean, the second this morning, I had to call the police out there because he was shooting over there. And my understanding, he's a felon with a, with a weapon. And so, um, they came out and they said they found the gun, but they didn't do anything. And, uh, also, I wanted to know why this house wasn't on that, um, condemned, where y'all was condemning houses? Because he haven't had any running water over there since twenty nineteen. So, um, it's hard for me to sit outside because it smells like urine and, um, I don't know toilet. That, that's my complaint, so like I had talked with the mayor about it, I had talked with the board about it, I even talked with Ben about it, but when I talked to you last, you were saying that he had, um, a mental problem, so, like, I don't know what can be done about it.
I, I can't, uh, diagnose him, I just, uh, but I, um, yes, ma'am, I, I did say that, but I didn't. I, I shouldn't have said that, but yes, ma'am.
Is there anything we can do about it? Because I, I mean, I got grandkids that be there, I don't even let them go outside because all of the traffic that goes on over, over there, and like I said, with them shooting and stuff, I don't know, know where that really is gonna go.
Yes, sir.
So, I am familiar with, with, with the case and, um, he does, and, and it's a fact, he does have a mental issue, we had him committed through the process. And when he comes out and returns back to his old state, and we, we're doing everything we can legally, but this issue is, is mental and it's gonna take more than law enforcement to, to help him. And we, we have worked through Christie Carr's office trying to get him. He has been committed in the past, he just, he needs more treatment.
And you, I had, you told me back in September that you was talking to the mayor.
I did.
That you talked to the mayor.
I have.
So, is it taking that long for her to do something?
It takes more than just somebody, it has to be family or somebody that writes the affidavit that can get him in front of, of the courts. And we, we've been trying to get police reports, and like I said, we've committed more, which what we could, it's just gonna take.
And that's the only time I had from this, when he gone those seven days.
That, that's up to the courts and it's a civil matter, not, not, not a law court. And I'm not sure about the house.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I hear it's two part. We found the weapon, huh?
I'm not familiar with that.
Well, Officer Lane, I don't know if that's his first or last name, he was the one that came out there. And he said he did found, um, he found the weapon. Even though Demond said he wasn't shooting, I seen him, but he said he found the weapon, so, but he didn't do any arrest.
We respond to that house weekly, so I'm not sure the exact incident she's talking about.
I was concerned if we found the weapon and, and we, I know we contested that she could weapon been fired.
Well, if, if he was a felon, it wouldn't have mattered, we would, we would have arrested him anyway.
He is a felon.
I, I have ran his background, as far as convictions, I have not.
Is there any way we can fast track this? I, I, I don't wanna have a cavity, if we want to get this thing taken care of.
That might give you a question.
Yeah. I think I talked to the other students and, um, I just take the weapon, we gotta pick them here and then we gonna work it right, and do this while we do that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Next is Cheyenne Frazier.
Cheyenne Frazier, I live at four eighty-four Iowa Street, and I'm continuing from what she was saying, um, I've seen him walking up and down the road, cussing, no one's outside, he had a machete in his hand. Um, he was at my house one day, banging on the door. Thank goodness my kids weren't at home and my husband, because it might have went different. And I asked him, why was he banging on the door? And he said he was looking for a woman, and he told me her name, and I said, she don't live here. I said, so you need to get out of my yard. I have put up no trespassing signs, we put it up in our yard. He's been in our yard, it was late at night, he was around our car. And I asked him, what was he doing out there? And he said he thought it was his friend's car. I know he knows who lives there, who those vehicles, whose are they, but my thing is, he's out there and he's walking up and down the street with that machete. We don't know if he's gonna think one of us is whomever he is, he's cursing at. And he's yelling, I'm gonna kill you. No one should have to be subjected to that. I don't even let my son outside to play basketball. I don't feel comfortable, I'm at work, my husband at work.
The time is up.
No, we should get through.
Yes, ma'am.
My children are at home, I have two girls in college, they come home, I don't even feel comfortable for them to be outside. And when I'm at work and my husband is at home, our son is there by himself until we get there. Um, all through the night, you can hear him back there screaming, howling, hitting on stuff. All through the night, early in the morning, it's a lot of traffic that goes back there to that house. And it's a lot, and we shouldn't have to deal with that. So I'm just continuing what she was saying, what I witnessed.
Hold just a moment, yes, sir.
I got a question, uh, have you called law enforcement, and what, and what kind of response did you get if you called?
I was calling, um, they came out there. And when they, by the time they made it out there, he was gone, I don't know where he went, I don't think he went back home, they went back there. I don't think he went back home, I think he went up the trail to the other street walking. I called him about that time when he was on the porch, um, I called another time, they never showed up. I called about, he was shooting that night.
Now, they didn't show up for the shooting or something else?
They didn't show up when I called about the shooting.
Okay.
I don't remember when it was, but it's been so much.
Have you seen him in law enforcement? Have they detained him, or they stopped to talk to him? They've never engaged with it?
Um, I've seen him talk to him, but as far as the thing, he don't know.
Thank you.
I have a question.
For who, for Mr. Frye? Yes, sir.
I understand what you're dealing with. We want mental health issues. But how long are we gonna let it go on? I don't wanna wait till it's too late, I read about it, I see about it every day. We got a lot of mental health issues here. And, and I understand his, or the chief's problem, they're not mental healthy. And there are certain laws that they have to go by in order to be qualified. So, I think it leaves it on us at some point, to where we have to fast track this and get something done. Because it sounds like it's a ongoing task, isn't it?
Well, the first thing is, if anything, outstanding or pending right now in court.
No, I'm gonna ask him, does he have any family here, or have you tried to contact any families? Or if you can get somebody to, Chief Tucker, I have the proper documentation.
May not be anybody that wants, that wants to file, but, but if it's dangerous, other, it still says it's coming along. So, I mean, it even being, it can be. Unfortunately, if there's any laws in, I don't want to pass the law, but what's up with you that?
Yeah, I, I wanna get them some help, but I don't want anybody to get hurt.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question to Mr. Frye and maybe to Bo, but I'm trying to think, for the ladies there, if he's out there shooting and doing this stuff, could they, if they could get a cell phone video, uh, with the sound of that going on, wha, is that anything that would be worth having in court?
Yes.
It would be, so if they could get it, capture some of that on a video, then th- they could use that against.
That, that's correct, and that's more of the problem is gonna be that, that, or the town like from Ms. Frazier, is that if, uh, if law enforcement arrives and the person is gone, if they're not witnessing it, they can't go make an arrest on a misdemeanor. There's a felony they can investigate it, uh, go get a warrant for that person to arrest on a misdemeanor, but they can't make an arrest, and the person no longer is legal. So for noise, that's typically the problem. If someone calls two A.M., my neighbor's got a stereo on, come out here, the police pull up, they turn down the music. So, if that's, if that's happening, that, that's part of the problem, that's not all of it. That, but that's, that's if you're dealing with just the noise, uh, but a video would help. The individual can, can then fill out an affidavit, which I believe has been done, but I would have to go back and verify that, that the police are, 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 are hamstrung, and they receive the report and get out there, and says, this just happened, and there's a fear that by, by the time you get here, and that may be, uh, on a fast response time, I mean, that's, if it's loud music, you know, as soon as you have the person going to have music down, within sixty seconds when they get there, law enforcement is not able to take action at that time, just, just as far as the noise issue. But, but here I am, ma'am. She says she has a husband. I don't protect him by anything, and I don't want her husband in a situation that we could get some doctor for.
I agree with that.
You know, I don't want the young lady to happen, but, you know, right now, he's a brat, this is sorry.
Well, I, I can't, I can't say that, now, what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna discuss, thi- this is not the, 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 here tonight in open forum, public council meeting. So, I mean, but, but if someone's got a found a record, or working off their criminal charge of community, whether or not anybody's filed complaints, whether or not you've responded to it, so, I don't have that. You just, just know what to do. But I would say it's been, they know now.
I agree, I agree with that.
I, I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, do you know whether, uh, anyone in law enforcement has had training to deal with these kind of cases? Gonna get training to deal with these kind of cases?
The mental health part of it has been, is our most recent discussion of trying to add that to our police department. That has been the most recent discussion. Because in our community right now, there are quite a few people who are having some mental health challenges. And when it comes to trying to separate a criminal act from a mental act, if it's a criminal act, we can handle criminal. If it's mental, you got a little bit more going on, so we, we can make all the arrests for the criminal act. You arrest that person, take them to jail, and maybe the act wasn't as bad as, uh, maybe the act itself isolated, doesn't sound as bad. A judge has used that evidence in most of those cases, so I'm not, uh, so. So it's more to it than just arresting the person, is what I'm saying. They could get out for something that's a misdemeanor, yes, sir.
I understand all that, but my question is, has anyone in the department had training to deal with these type individuals? Or are they planning on getting training?
Yes, sir. Chief Woody offered a proposal on getting, uh, some monies allocated just for the mental health side of it.
Okay.
And so, yes, yes is the answer to your question, have we, we haven't moved on, or we haven't?
We're trained on dealing with mentally ill individuals, on a low level, but not on like medicine.
So, does that?
So they can de-escalate, but not to true.
So does that apply to their situation, your, your training that you have presently, it does?
It, it, it trains us to de-escalate and to understand that we're dealing with a mentally, a mentally diminished person and not a criminal. How to tell the difference?
Okay, that goes back to Brother Marvin's question, and if you have the training, then why are we letting it escalate?
Mayor? Why are we letting it escalate, or why do we let it continue?
Either or.
I don't think we let it escalate, I think it's convenient because of those.
It's escalated to the point that he's shooting a firearm, that's escalating.
Mayor?
Why are we allow, why are we allowing it?
He said he has the training, so if you have the training, as Brother Marvin said, why let it continue to that point where some, where we'll have a bad situation? That's, I guess that's, maybe we're all saying the same thing, in, in my.
Based on what we've heard tonight, they went one time to get him when he was shooting, and he wasn't there, so they, he, with, what Attorney Frye said was, it was, you could not, uh, once he had left, you can't go chasing him down on a misdemeanor, was what he was saying, you wouldn't chase him down on a misdemeanor in that particular instance. Last time, at the last city council meeting, I spoke with, uh, Mrs. Ellis right before the meeting. So that night, I left here and went over there, and I didn't see any lights, didn't hear anything. The next night, I rode through late, and I didn't see or hear anything. And I did that a couple more times sporadically, and I couldn't catch it. But they have been out there, and they do have reports on it. Uh, we just decided tonight to look into more of the options that are available, and take some of the counsel that we're receiving, that we received from Attorney Frye, to know how to move forward. But to this point, uh, to, to answer what I can right now is that, uh, I think we were doing some things that we thought were, were helpful. Uh, but of course, they live in it, and so we're able to come to it, and if it's not there, when we get there, we leave, then it'll appear that we've done nothing, but we have responded. Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Thank you. So, we have tonight a couple, uh, reports here. So we're first going to call for the annual report, Chief Ronald Nash of the Camden Fire Department.
Stephen.
Stephen.
I think you'll see before you all later, pack it out for the annual summary for twenty twenty-one. Try to include in the packet that was sent out to you by Ms. Rose, the statistics on the EMFRs report. So you can look those over ahead of time, I hate to hit you with that in a short period of time, expect you to soak it up. But this here'll just be a, a summary of the annual report for twenty twenty-one. If you would, I'm gonna start on page five. Now, I appreciate the opportunity to report to the council of the state of Camden Fire Department. Last year brought about a lot of challenges for the department. Despite these challenges, I'd like to show the council that we continue to move in a positive direction and serve the needs and citizens of Camden. Last year, the department continued to struggle with staffing issues. We started off the year short one firefighter, and ended the year with one vacancy. However, during the year, we experienced the retirement of three personnel in senior positions, and the departure of two additional personnel. Promotions and hiring of new personnel have filled these vacancies, and the fire department is currently fully staffed. At this time, I'd like to recognize the service of those personnel retiring in twenty twenty-one. Assistant Chief Daniel Swain, twenty-one years' service. Captain Lester Kendricks, thirty-five years of service. And Captain Randy Stover, forty-five years of service, with an additional two years at the city shop prior to that. A new fire truck was purchased and delivery is expected in August of this year. The new fire truck will go in service as engine one and respond from central station. It will be dedicated in memory of Captain Randy Stover, who passed away January of twenty twenty-two. After much effort, the fire department this last year presented a contract proposal to the companies and entities within Highland Industrial Park last year concerning fire protection coverage. The fire department received no response or interest in continuing a fire protection agreement from the industrial park area. As stated in the letter sent out to those residing within the Highland Industrial Park, the Camden Fire Department no longer provides fire protection in the industrial park. Responsibility for fire protection is the sole responsibility of agencies within Camden County. The Camden Fire Department will provide limited fire suppression equipment and personnel in the form of mutual aid upon request of the authority having jurisdiction and based on the availability of such resources. At the end of twenty twenty-one, a new software system was put in place to replace our old system and is currently in use. The department inspected and serviced six hundred thirty-one hydrants last year. The Camden Fire Department continues to maintain an ISO two rating. I'm now gonna go through, uh, some of the statistics for the year, but on page seven.
What question?
Yes, sir.
Your software system, is it functioning?
Yes, sir, we, we've got a few glitches, we started early in December to, and ran both systems at the same time. So the guys be fully trained, we all run into a few issues on the inspection side, but overall, it's working good.
Operation?
Yes, sir, it's working real good. And the reason we changed over to a new system was, the old system was fixed to be done away with, we had to either update or go to something new. And the update was gonna cost way more than going to emergency reporting, and a lot of other fire departments go to emergency reports, and that's the decision we've made to go with. Okay, I'm page seven there on the total request for service. In, uh, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty, the Camden Fire Department answered eleven hundred ninety-nine National Fire Institute reporting system requests for service. This represents an increase of forty-one percent from the previous year of twenty twenty. This number only represents the EMFRs eligible request. The department answered an additional fourteen hundred and thirty-one requests for service that did not meet the criteria for EMFRs. The addition of this data raises our total request for service to twenty-six hundred and thirty for the year twenty twenty-one. This is up from twenty-four, twenty-six total requests for service in twenty twenty. This represents an eight percent increase in call volume overall for the year of twenty twenty-one. On the fire response side and fire responses, in twenty twenty-one, the Camden Fire Department responded to one hundred and two fire calls. Of these one hundred and two fire calls, thirty-seven were structured fires. The numbers of fire calls for twenty twenty-one were up fourteen point six percent, and the number of structured fires were up twenty-three point three percent from twenty twenty. Our goal is, and always has been, the reduction of fire losses. Our increase in fire costs for twenty twenty-one in comparison to twenty twenty reflects an increase that falls within the parameters of the last six years overall. On property loss, in twenty twenty-one, we experienced forty-four requests for service that resulted in property loss. This number is down from fifty-five property loss calls experienced in twenty twenty. The value of these losses was established using a variety of sources, including ACT Data Scout, the National Automobile Dealers Association, and Kelley Blue Book. These forty-four responses represent a total value of one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, with an estimated loss of one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. This represents property savings to the citizens of Camden of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-nine dollars. And table three shows the historical property loss data, two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-one. And a lot of times on these, the fires depend, I think you'll find at the age of the houses, a lot of the older houses, you're gonna have a whole lot more damage percentage-wise, because they're just gonna burn faster. Okay, on response time, in twenty twenty-one, the Camden Fire Department provided an average response time of two point five four minutes. The average response time for twenty twenty-one was slightly higher than the average response time for twenty twenty. And table four exhibits the historical response time data from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-one there. Public education and inspections, public education and fire inspections have always been an important part of our service that we provide to our community. It allows us an opportunity to educate the public and hopefully reduce fire losses, injuries, and even deaths. In twenty twenty-one, we were able to increase our public education efforts, efforts, while continuing to be responsible in our contact with the public as public remains a concern. The Fire Department's public education program were reinstated, excuse me, reinstated, but on a limited basis. In twenty twenty-one, we provided fire education, fire education classes to five hundred and thirteen individuals, compared to only seventy in twenty twenty. This is a significant increase in our public education program, hopefully the department will be able to increase our efforts as public health conditions improve. On inspections, the Camden Fire Department conducted six hundred and three inspections in twenty twenty-one, an increase compared to two hundred and eighty-five inspections in twenty twenty. At the beginning of twenty twenty-one, we reinstated our inspection program and provided an inspection program for the entire year. I believe since I've been there, that's probably the most inspections that have been conducted in a year. On training, training is a large part of our daily activities, we continue to concentrate on preparing our officers and firefighters for the next step in their careers and provide classes on a variety of topics related to fire service. We also continue to provide emergency medical technician training. In twenty twenty-one, the department allowed fifteen hundred ninety-seven training hours through the Arkansas Fire Academy as well as other sources. There was a decrease in training hours last year due to the reinstatement of the department's inspection program. During twenty twenty, department personnel scheduled more time towards training while non-emergency services were partially suspended. Last year, they just had more time where the services not being conducted as much, and they used a lot of it for training. Medical responses, the Camden Fire Department continues to provide emergency medical services within the scope of our training. As the fire department is increasingly called upon to provide medical assistance to the public, we continue to increase our level of training. The department currently has one paramedic, ten EMTs, and sixteen EMRs on the department. At present, we have two additional personnel in EMT training. The department responded to seventy-seven medical assist calls in twenty twenty-one. We also responded to additional sixty-eight invalid assist calls, which are not included in our medical response data. They are included in the total number of service call entries. Department personnel also provide medical assistance on all rescue and extrication calls, and that data is also not reflected in this total. Now, the last page here is just a quick update reminder of the Fire Department's organization. Camden Fire Department is organized into a three-shift or consume system. Each shift is comprised of nine firefighters that are divided between three stations based on emergency response requirements. Each shift reports for duty at oh seven hundred hours, works a twenty-four hour day, and then at oh seven hours the following morning. During each day, the shift works to fulfill basic station duties based on the day of the week. In addition to the daily duties, each shift is required to perform public education, fire hydrant maintenance, commercial inspections, and to maintain a constant state of readiness. Currently, the Fire Department is fully staffed for the first time in several years.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you have.
No, sir, that's fine.
When I looked at this, this graphic about the response time.
Yes, sir.
I noticed it went up in twenty, but it, it maybe came pretty average there in twenty-one. And, you know, I'm just trying to, is that the cause of where the fire was, or did we have turnaround?
It can, I mean, I think last year, we were at, just under two and, two point five, so it's not much.
Pretty close, right?
Yes, sir, it's, it's close, it's close, it's gonna vary every year. It could be for a, a lot of reasons, different locations of fire, you have fur, wildfires further away from the station, the newer personnel that you're having to train and work with a little harder, and they're nervous not getting in there quick enough, it could be several things, so.
Yes, sir.
Chief, on page eight, uh, you say that there were a hundred and two fire calls in twenty twenty-one, and thirty-seven were structured fires, that comes out to roughly between thirty-five and forty percent of calls. So the balance of those calls, it was kinda heavy weighted on that sixty percent side of non-structures, is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, we average, uh, thirty-seven's actually a little, you know, average in there, whatever, a little. As far as structured fires, it's not uncommon to have fifty structured fires in a year, and very, I would say it probably goes from thirty to sixty in there, three years, that's structured fires. By the time you count every other kind of fire, brush fires, car fires, you know, there's all, well, on the, the statistics I sent to you from the EMFRs report, it was in the packet Ms. Rose sent, if you would love, this number one says fire, and it has, I don't know what, twelve different types of fires there.
Okay, okay.
That are, that are broken down.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Our next report will come from, uh, Chief Boyd Willie of our Camden Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Alvin, uh, this is the annual report for the crime and activity for two thousand and twenty-one for the Camden Police Department. We're mandated to report to our, what, what is known as NIBRs or the National Incident-Based Reporting System, seven different categories of crime that are committed inside the city limits of Camden. Um, the first one you can see is our homicide, we did have three homicides in Camden, that is a little higher than normal, we, we normally average one or two. That is a little higher than normal. We, we normally average one or two. Uh, but in each, uh, there were an arrest made on all three homicides and all three subjects are waiting on trial. Uh, there were twelve robberies in twenty-one compared to the seven in twenty, which was a little bit lower than what was in two thousand and nineteen, which were ten. Out of the twelve robberies, eleven of the cases have been closed with one still under investigation. The number of rapes also increased to twenty-one with four being reported compared to the one that was in two thousand and twenty. Three of the four places have been cleared and one is still under investigations. The number of assaults decreased in twenty twenty-one from forty being reported to forty-four. That was in tw- in two thousand and twenty. There was thirty-seven assaults have been cleared with three still under investigation. Burglaries were broken down into two different categories, one's residential and one's commercial. There were fifty-five residential burglaries reported, which is a little bit higher than what it was in nineteen, uh, two thousand and twenty with forty. Out of those fifty-five burglaries, forty-seven or eighty-five and a half percent of those were cleared. On the commercial side, there were twenty-five commercial burglaries, uh, being reported in two thousand and twenty-one, which is higher than eighteen that were reported in twenty. Out of those twenty-nine burglaries, twenty-four have been cleared. And let me tell you about a commercial burglary. We have a, a thing with Walmart now. A lot of these are not your typical burglary. So if you get caught stealing or shoplifting at Walmart, if you do it a second time, it's considered a commercial burglary to steal a second time because you're entering and remaining in a store that you're banned from committing another crime. So a lot of these twenty-nine are just crimes that you would, it's not like they broke into the, the building. So I just wanna make that clear that the burglaries aren't like, you know, at NIGVERS. The thefts did, uh, increase from fifty thefts in twenty-one compared to forty in two thousand and twenty. There were thirty-two of those have been cleared or sixty-four percent of them. Auto thefts were also up this year. There was twenty-two cars stolen in the city of Camden compared to twenty last year. Out of the twenty-two, we did recover nineteen or eighty-six percent of them. And another thing about the auto thefts, in each case where a car was stolen, the keys were in the car and the door unlocked. And it's really hard to prevent that. And we, we've had a campaign going for about three years now to get people to, to lock their cars and take their keys out. There's, there's, it's not impossible, but it's really hard to steal today's cars. And out of every car case, there was never a window broken. They simply opened the door and the keys were in. On the patrol side, um, I got it a little backwards. Uh, in, in two thousand and twenty, there was twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. But this year, we had ten thousand eight hundred and seventy calls for service. We wrote two thousand seven hundred and forty-five reports. There were three hundred and sixty-two traffic accidents. We wrote one thousand and thirty citations. We made seven hundred and sixty-eight physical arrests this year. Warrants were also, were, were way down. We only served three hundred and ten warrants and only escorted a hundred and twenty-one times. I think COVID had a lot to do with the arrest and the limited jail space of how we could serve the warrants and have these people arrested. On the animal patrol side was the last one. The animal control in two thousand and twenty-one wrote one hundred and forty-five, or confined a hundred and forty-five animals or dogs, strictly dogs. We don't deal with cats. There were five hundred and ninety-five complaints. We took a hundred and thirty reports, uh, wrote eight warnings and wrote fifty-eight citations. Out of the, the dogs that were confined and the complaints, two hundred and forty-five were confined and ninety-eight of those were, uh, sent to shelters or reclaimed by their owners. Yes, sir.
On the animal control, does, uh, our animal control officer take off every weekend?
No, they, they are, there's two and they, they swap every other weekend. Their schedule lets them swap out every other weekend.
So there is somebody doing it every weekend?
Uh, for four hours, on Saturdays, four hours on Sundays.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. You were talking about the, the auto theft. Break-ins and keys are in the car and the car's unlocked. Are most of those at the home and residence or are those in parking lots and shopping areas?
Just about all of them were at residence. A lot of them I saw this year, uh, like we've had one stolen last week where somebody went out to warm their car up and they left it running with the key in it and they walked back out and the car's gone. But we, like I said, a lot of it is, I think, just joyriding because nineteen of them were recovered within a day or so in Camden.
Yes, sir.
Uh, chief, on your, uh, staffing, I know Chief Nash said, what, a hundred percent staff, a fully staff? Are you, are, are you in a position to talk about that tonight or you want?
I can.
Okay.
Um, we are currently, I think, seven officers short. We have been for the majority of the last two years.
Any more questions? I'll do a soon going.
You know, it's, it's done by civil service and when we, we advertise, we'll average one or two people every six months. If you watch TV or if you're familiar with law enforcement, this is not a Camden issue. This is around the world. I don't know anybody that wants to be a police in the United States right now.
Thank you. So my report, I am, I also have to give one on this month and so I'm gonna, uh, move swiftly. Um, with, uh, twenty twenty-one being like it was, it was certainly of the overcomer. But it's been our duty to maintain health and safety. So we were, we presented a weekly update to inform our community of some of the change in protocols of COVID. We made that a priority and also the city was asked by the state to get involved in the vaccination of our citizens, to which we had good success. We also have, having to continue to seek grants to try to find ways and means of, uh, affording some of the expensive things that we need to stay on top of things in the city. Uh, also twenty twenty-one, we did the Spring Harrison District and we were able to get it on the state registry. And so now we are, I think number four in our state is still tourism for finances. And so we're working diligently, uh, to become a part of that. We're already on the CINIC seven. And so in the recent years, uh, some of the repairs that had been made in our community by some of the utility companies, uh, some of them were leaving a mess, some of the subcontractors were leaving a mess. So we, uh, met with them, myself, Mr. Woodin, who is a code enforcer, as well as Mr. Franklin, who is our public works director, we called them in and we began to meet with some of them to try to make sure that they would start leaving the city in as good or better uh, shape than what it was. And so I'll give some numbers on some of the repairs that we've been able to make recently to get some of the dips out of the road. We're also continuing to work on getting our city parks, uh, up to par. Uh, much of the equipment that is ragged, we've been trying to repair and or remove. Uh, the trace, which is two point one miles of exercise as well as playground equipment. We're working with the Camden Connection to make sure all of those, uh, pieces to the puzzle are working. Our code enforcer again has aggressively been addressing some of the issues of uninhabitable structures. As a matter of fact, sixteen of the condemned structures were removed by the property owners and twelve of them have been removed by our own, uh, city workers. And we've also been helping and we found that about twenty-six people have put their, finally put their addresses on their houses, which is only four inches in size, but some people wouldn't do that. And so because of letters and because of diligence, we've been able to get people to, uh, also, uh, to do that recently. Uh, Mr. Foot, uh, has agreed on last year to do some of our streets. He was unable to fulfill that contract. So this year, we get those streets and with your support and your generosity, we'll be able to allocate some more monies and almost double some of that on this year. We're, we're hoping for that. Uh, we've been posting more of the vacancies from the boards and commissions so that some of the people in our community who may be interested, uh, can join some of the different boards and commission. We've been streamlining many of the processes for city government, uh, the parades and some of the other things that we're doing to help some of our citizens un- understand better how things work here. And, uh, we were able to get a lot of legislation on last year, twenty twenty-one, that we're very proud of. And we've been engaging, uh, the community, as many as will join up with us. The enti- entige has come in and fixed a lot of the lights that were out in the cities. We, we, they caught up at one point last summer and we were real excited about they're catching up and I being able to get so many of our streetlights done so that our city could be more lit up. Uh, the investigators, as, uh, Chief Woody just sat down, our criminal investigative division on last year, uh, they worked a total of five hundred and forty-two cases and they were able to close out four hundred and sixty-seven of them. And eighty-six percent of those cases were solved and that's a really good record for our, our community. And CID also recovered over two hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars in stolen property. Our narcotics division worked ninety-nine narcotic cases, executed thirty-seven search warrants and seized over two thousand, seized two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars in cash, a twenty twenty-one Dodge Charger, a Ford Explorer, and twelve handguns. Our patrol division, taking into consider- consideration that we were dealing with COVID as a pandemic and a shortage in staffing, uh, in staffing, the overtime that was budgeted only went over eighteen percent. But overall, Camden Police Department budget was a negative two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars under budget overall. And also the police department, uh, worked very hard trying to cut costs and save whenever they could. And with community service, Mr. Elsie Buckshot Smith was recognized throughout our nation as a holder of law enforcement officer. And, uh, the police department also was instrumental in leading our city in the downtown Easter egg hunt, the fishing derby at the high school pond. There was a booth at the, at all of the First Friday events. And shot with a cop this year, uh, last year rather, raised eleven thousand dollars. Also, uh, much to our dismay, we had the passing of Mrs. Sam Strickland on last year. And also the award that was given to them for doing so well in their audit after her forty years of service. Also wanna make mention of some of the good things that have happened with our public works on last year as we were rocking over there. The street department received a new E-eighty-eight Mini X thanks to you guys and completed sixty-five street cuts from the water and gas company, patched various potholes, uh, called in by the citizens of Camden and completed more than ten rounds per ward with the street sweeper in twenty twenty-one. The parks department received a brand-new F-one-fifty pickup truck and we used, uh, we also used a small knuckle boom. And we cut over six hundred acres of grass and maintained all the softball leagues for the, uh, all the softball fields for the league. The sanitation department went about rebuilding compacting number two. Also received the D-six bulldozer, hauled over one hundred and twenty loads of storm debris to the landfill and purchased four hundred and twenty used garbage carts for the low cost of only ten dollars each from Bradley County. And, uh, due to, uh, COVID and the drastic loss of employees, smack overtainment had, had not fulfilled their responsibility, which is something I said earlier on which they agreed. But we're expecting this year to be another rocking year for us. Right before you, right when you were sitting down, some of you received copies of before and after pictures of what it's looking like now when we do demolition. And so if you look at the before picture, you see the house. After, you see the house, you see the land ready to be built on. So it's in the original state, just dirt there. Concrete is moved and everything. So we're grateful for such a wonderful team and I am not oblivious to the fact that none of this would be possible without such a wonderful team working with us. That is the mayor's report for this twenty twenty-two. I have a question. Yes, sir.